And for those who are curious, our chairman is ill tonight, so I think I'm the last chairman for two thousand nineteen and that's why I'm sitting here over there. So, um, our invocation will be by Pastor Ron Swan tonight from Calvary Baptist Church. He'll be, he'll make his way up here now. Um, Pastor Swan, he'll tell us a little about, a little about Calvary Baptist and some of your, maybe some of your ministries here in the county and pray for our county.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to come and open up the prayer tonight. And I would, you mentioned those words of all hair kindness and all those wonderful words that you said that we wanted to do was to take up those words. And I thought, it was an unknown author, but not a well, those words, they don't, they can not scripture. So, uh, it's sad to say that God is still an unknown person to a lot of people, but that, that is one of our ministry opportunities. We have our church who will tell people about Jesus Christ. And, uh, some of you were able to come, Cheryl and myself, and, uh, we had a state representative as well as our current mayor. Uh, we had done country day a while back and we believe in God and country in that order. And, uh, but it's our privilege to invite any and all elected officials to come, not everyone to come. And, uh, but, but next year we hope for that more, we, right before this, we believe we have a biblical mandate from God to pray with all on the court. And we believe that each, each elected official has an opportunity and privilege, uh, placed in their, by their, their constituents, appointed by God. And I believe that all of you of service of God, and I'm thanking you for your service to our county. I've been in Calvary Baptist Church since, since you, actually in Madison for nine years. And, uh, it's a joy to be closer to home. I'm living in Southern, now my wife and I have two kids at one sixth grade at college. Uh, I've been to South State this, uh, this month, uh, next month. Uh, these major and my daughter go to Georgia College, she's June. So, um, I've been very busy. I'm a biographical pastor, I work part-time also from Disco. But it's, uh, 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 we, our church loves people and, uh, it's been around for a good while. I think nineteen oh three, it was pretty much, uh, one of the first Baptist churches. I think the first one that called it, uh, Second Baptist Church. And over the years, uh, the name changed. It's not a fact that I meet people in the Mill Village, uh, where the church is now, right on the edge of the Mill Village there and, uh, we try to reach those folks and we're trying to reach those folks a long time and other people, of course, in the county. But, um, I think there was a point in time when they would call it Calvin Mills Baptist Church, but today they're called it Calvary Baptist Church. The older building that's there now with the sequel on, built in the late nineteen forties, we're worse than that now. And, uh, so it's our privilege to, uh, to be a part of what God is doing, right here too. Our responsibility, we look, we have a responsibility just like you to our county and really to our world and most of all to our sake. But I want to thank you for allowing me to come. We have a Hispanic congregation that meets in our old fellowship hall, we allow them to go over here, renovate the, the, the fellowship hall and they turned it into a church and, and, uh, they probably run eighty to a hundred and I think we're gonna have a combined service. We invite all of y'all to come Sunday if you'd like to have a combined service, uh, with the Hispanic church. So we'll be having lunch, family, and, uh, so we always have a great time celebrating Thanksgiving here because we do have a lot to thank for. And I do want to thank you for allowing me to come and open up the prayer tonight and I want to pray for you, let's pray. God, we thank you for this day, thank you for your blessings. We thank you for your many, many blessings, the way that you watch over for and taking care of us, God. We just thank you for, uh, the privilege we have tonight, or just be a part of this county, live in this county and, and all the many needs in this county. And I want to thank you for the commissioners and the manager and all that you've placed and authority here, Father, to conduct your business for the business of the people here in this county. Lord, I pray that you would continue to watch over them, protect them, that you would guide and direct them. I thank you, Lord, that ultimately they are your servants. And God, I would ask that tonight that you would give them wisdom, uh, as they conduct business, Lord, that they would all be to the Lord together. And what I thank you again for allowing me to get to know these people and, uh, we'll thank you again for what they did and I pray, Lord, again for your wisdom and guidance as they have had their meeting tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Again, thank you Pastor Swan. And speaking of the Mill Village, I was going into the Baptist church on the Mill Village, the, uh, the Non-Eagle side of the church. So, just kidding, thank you for doing, being here for us tonight. Thank you very much. This time I'd like to ask Commissioner Henderson to lead us and the place for leaders.
I pray that leading is to see the light of the United States of America and consider your Father, which is sent by my nation under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Commissioner Henderson. Commissioners, I trust you all have a chance to, uh, review the agenda and at this time I'll seek the motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Chair, uh, we called Mr. Chair tonight. Uh, I made a motion to adopt the agenda.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schultz and a second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Agenda is adopted with five to a vote. All right, this time in our agenda is, we've come upon the citizen comments section of the agenda, the agenda items, the, these comments will be about agenda items only and for no more than three minutes. Comments for agenda items only. That portion of our meeting is closed. At this time we'll go to agenda item number six, whole business, and I'll turn that over to our candidate turn.
Thank you Chairman Edwards. Um, as you all know, there was a table for our November fifth meeting regarding the county's right to or option to repurchase approximately nine point one two six five acres of real property. Um, the time that the county could exercise their right to repurchase has now expired, so no action needs to be taken tonight.
Thank you Mayor. Uh, at this time we'll move to agenda item number seven, that would be the chairman's report. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Jerry Silvio to come up and give, uh, a brief overview of the, or the JDA report.
Thank you Commissioner Edwards. Um, commission, good to see y'all. Three, three months goes by just like that. So this would be the, the third quarter report in, in September. And, um, so as usual, we'll go through some marketing activities, prospects, current tenants, parkway extension, financial, other activities, and then activities anticipated in the fourth quarter. So my partner, Sarah Hall, has a little one at six, so she was unable to make it, so I'm gonna try to do my best to fill in for her. So under marketing activities, uh, it's pretty simple, we've got a good team with Shane Short and Sarah running that interference for marketing. So they're continuing to update marketing materials, they have a new aerial in the process being prepared, websites being updated and they'll have that aerial showing the whole park. On very soon, uh, the, uh, professionals attended the Southern Economic Development Council Conference in New Orleans, um, and the JDA co-hosted an exception for site selectors. This was sort of a partnership that we will with the state, uh, who attends all of these conferences and the state having confidence in our team, uh, asked us to consider, uh, co-hosting, which, uh, which we did. It was an exception of probably a hundred or so site selectors from all over the country. Uh, the S E D C conference generally has about three to four people in general. Um, they are and now have attended the Suits Japan Conference, or the Southeast US Japan Conference, been around about forty years and rotates from one state to the next. I think it's every thirteen years, fifteen, fourteen years, so, uh, it's kind of a one type of thing. Uh, the JDA did sponsor the local partners, we'll, talk about in a few moments. Regarding prospects, uh, we have had a couple of new prospect visits and a couple of the former prospects are still active and, uh, we fit nicely in part some of the new visits. Again, we, uh, focus on the eastern side of the park where the parkway is being extended across Dennis Creek. We're also pre-creating the seventeen acre site, which makes it even more attractive to industry. Uh, just when they come in, they wanna, they wanna turn the lights on the next day, but not only do you now have a parkway with all the facilities, but we'll have a very big site. Seventeen acres is about a million square feet, so it's easier to perspective. Current tenants, uh, Dakota continues to increase its enrollment base. Uh, I don't know the exact number Sarah would, but it's around a thousand now, north of a thousand. Uh, and they plans to, they did, uh, sponsor the Southeastern US Japan event. Facebook continues constructing buildings, one and two, that are rapid pace. Uh, it will be finished within a year, probably closer to nine months now. And they're working with Newton County on a new median cut and second entrance to their complex. Under the parkway extension, we have received all state and federal permits required for construction of Dennis Creek crossing. Uh, the contractor Plateau has commenced with and is, has the box culverts installed and masquerading at the site, the pad site, and construction of the parkway extension is well under play. The project is on the schedule and budget and budget with an estimated completion this coming month, December or January, hundred percent complete. So in the financial, the, uh, marketing budget was increased to reflect this phase in, in the two conferences. Um, we don't do magazine ads and print media and stuff like that, it's more of a live on purpose. Teaming up with our state, because they're in Colorado. So when they invite them, the local PD folks are asked to join them, uh, it's further grounds and not to mention creating, uh, new relationships. So phase one of the parkway extension is funded in full by the sale in two thousand eighteen of the land, Facebook. Uh, and then in addition, Walton County will disperse its tax revenue used received in two thousand nineteen from Dakota in the amount of just under a million dollars. And that's against an annual occurrence with, you know, assessments going up, that number should grow up as well. That'll go to the counties and the school districts for the revenue sharing agreement. Newton County will also disperse two thousand nineteen tax revenues for property located in Newton County, Oregon, of Stanton Springs. The Facebook pile payments will commence once the certificate of occupancy is received for the new building as soon as two thousand twenty-one. So that'll be about another million dollars per year. Their total of the final bill is possible over the coming twenty years. Uh, the I D A, the JDA continues working with counties to create a procedural manual regarding tax assessment, tax collection, and tax digest reporting under House Bill four of six. We updated our zoning ordinances with the Able and Great Health of Judy Johnson and that has been adopted with more than in multiple counties. There was a difference of ordinances from one county to the next, so it's kind of confusing and we thought it would be best to unify it, in fact, in a broader term, uh, for the whole project. Um, so for fourth quarter, uh, activities anticipated, some of these have already been held, the Congress and Jerry High's multi-county job fair on October fourth had about sixty vendors and I don't know, but a lot of, uh, potential employees attended that event. Uh, completion of the parkway, phase one will be, uh, by the end of this year. Uh, JDA representatives with Dakota attended the Japanese East Conference in Savannah. Updates under the website will be finalized, Facebook construction activities continue. So that is our report. Um, if there are any questions, I'll try to answer them and by opinion I will hear what you said.
Thank you Jerry. Uh, Mr. Count.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Um, Jerry, we talked about the parkway a minute, did they ever get the name changed to that? Is it still back on to the parkway? Because it's a little confusing because you've got two signs on the interstate that says Stanton Springs Parkway and then when you get off, you never see Stanton Springs Parkway.
We're working on that. Uh, I don't know the status of it and I don't recall whether the attorney is working on that.
It, it would be easier to do it now before we get more industry out there because it's only one effect, um, Dakota. Let's see, I'll put that. It probably ought to call Stanton Springs Parkway.
Yeah, that, we, we had that discussion, uh, in board meeting and, um, that was clearly what sends that. But, uh, I don't recall where that is in the process.
If you don't mind, I'll do that right now, I suppose. It's a little confusing coming down the interstate and see that sign, but it's really not the Stanton Springs Parkway.
Right.
It's a little confusing. And the other thing too, um, I know that, uh, Facebook is very interested in solar power, power, um, generated by Walton and Sue. Uh, I was at a C L A conference, uh, class about a week ago. I got a contact person who makes those decisions about solar power and they look for sites, uh, in Newton County and they would be very interested in it, so I'm gonna get that done with you and then y'all can go where you want to follow up.
Would this be a solar farm, you're talking?
Yes.
Similar to what it was in Walton County?
Yeah.
I didn't do that.
They, they're very interested in solar power right now, so.
That might be a good piece of that background that they're looking at. What have you on?
I just got the information for you.
Okay, yeah, it is. You're a good thing now. What are you gonna say?
I'll say it. It was. Thank you.
Also, on the chairman's report, I don't have anything else, but basically I want to remind everyone of the lighting of the square Thursday night and you know what time that's gonna be? It's sunset six. That's a great event if you've never been, if you've never been, uh, the lighting of the square Thursday night at six o'clock here, good event too. All right, our next agenda item, uh, county managers' report.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first slide there you'll, you'll see is the, uh, our F H R update during this past month, we had seven people hires and nine self, excuse me, nine separations. Our total employee count now is seven or two, that does include, um, the seasonal election process. The permit report, uh, we are still staying abreast of where we were, uh, last year. Um, you'll see we permitted, um, almost sixty homes, uh, for this, uh, past month and, um, we have had, um, some activity in the tenant build outs as well as primary commercial, um, you know, permits. And you see the next slide, uh, we have the number of, uh, signed, uh, permits within process as well. Next slide is a recap of the work orders that Public Works has done in use of the districts over the past month. The two thousand eleven squash project, a paving project, Spirit Beach Chase, Stevenson Road, and, uh, Par Farm. Some other things that we've been, uh, working on were the, uh, shoulder projects on Coral Road, um, and on, uh, January two thirteen, uh, we have helped out the city of Locksford. Um, and it, this is our trail over the last several years, we have assisted Oslo by paving, uh, one, a street, they pay for all the materials and we utilize our, our equipment. One of the other major things that we've been doing is working on these critical trail, you would recall that we have an agreement with the Trail and Path Foundation, uh, that we would utilize impact fee dollars, um, to assist them in paving that trail so that it can have an all-weather surface. And so we've been helping to clear that, getting anticipation, getting ready to have that thing. Next slide please. Uh, these are just a picture from our retreat, um, and we were fortunate enough to have, um, Secretary of State Rafferty visit with us for a while and talk about the election process and all of those, um, the new changes that are coming with that. Uh, for the benefit of the, the public who, um, may not have been able to attend, uh, we did talk about economic development, the creation of film commission, local vendor preferences, uh, engineering firm utilization. The working agreements between the board members, uh, how to be more effective board, and then we did discuss future of the square. Uh, next slide please. The next slide, leadership Newton County, uh, spent a day working with Newton County government and, uh, you can see there's a picture there of, uh, the Turner Lake facility, uh, senior services provided breakfast and, uh, fed everyone, get them happy. And, uh, some of the other places that we visited were the sheriff's, uh, office of the sheriff as well as the jail. And you'll see, um, that, that picture in the bottom right-hand corner is in the sheriff's, uh, auditorium and the other picture is at, uh, Cornish Creek, um, the water creek, uh, Cornish Creek. Also, uh, Newton County Recreation Department officially opened their dog park, it's located at, uh, Turner Lake. So there was out, there's a space there for large dogs and for small dogs. Um, the, uh, brand opening worked very well, there were about forty dogs there to, to break into new, uh, the new facility. You'll see some pictures there on the upper left-hand corner was our third place winner for, um, the dress to a press contest for the dogs. And, uh, you'll see that, uh, the second, the third place there was for Zoeth and Abba and Sheila, the two little dogs. And then bottom right there was, uh, second place, Guy Hopkins and his dog Winston. And then first place went to Elle and her on the Batika Mark. So I want to congratulate all those folks and let everybody know that, that you have a, a dog that you'd like to get some exercise. There's two places now, one on the Turner Lake on the east, the west side of the county and one over on the east side of Newton County, over behind the library. So we make sure people know that. And also, uh, we, the, the week before last, the sheriff's office, uh, opened his west side precinct. We got quite a large crowd of people, there were well over a hundred people there. Um, and a lot of people from the neighborhood, it was a very successful opening, beautiful building and, uh, we had a great time over there. We encourage everyone to visit and to take advantage of the services that are being provided there with the, not only the sheriff's, uh, substation, but also, uh, tax collector and the tax appraiser, uh, have offices there and stuff. But that was a very nice meeting. And that's all I, uh, and that's all I have for today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, with five minutes to go until we start the zoning portion of our meeting, we'll start the new business portion of our meeting with the consent agenda. Uh, I don't think, I just want to state that that is resolution R one 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 nine one nine and the letter's inside your agenda, your side agenda helps. With that, I will seek a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion. I have a, a motion by Commissioner Cowan and a second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? That's just five zero. All right, we can go into, unless we can go into early. At this time, we will enter into our, uh, zoning portion of our meeting. We have four zoning cases. Uh, the first case number will be conditional use permit nineteen zero 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 three. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna invite the, uh, Department Director to be the const, to present the case.
Good evening Commissioners. The first coming petition before you this evening is a conditional use permit C P nineteen dash zero 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 three. This property is located at sixty-seven and sixty-nine Cole Road. Uh, the main address for the property is fifty-three Cole Road, it is a strip plaza and, uh, this request was to establish a commercial childcare, daycare, child daycare facility in the Almond Overlay District Two. As you can see that this is the, uh, Almond Overlay map that is located in District Two. The property identified is in the, uh, highlighted in blue there. Uh, here's another aerial overview, this sits just north of Brownbridge Road on Cole Road. Um, and the planning commission, uh, originally this was heard by the planning commission back in, uh, June of two thou, of, uh, June twenty-fifth of two thousand and nineteen. And at that time they tabled it for, to allow the applicants to, uh, go back and provide additional information. And it went back to the planning commission on July twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. And the planning commission recommended the nonpetition at that time, a vote of five zero based on the following concerns. Traffic in the area without proper traffic calming devices, the parking for the facility, the intensity abuses within the strip mall, the location of the play area requires crossing a truck loading zone, the trash receptacle area, and the overall development of the property. This came before this board on September twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, and at that time, because there were several changes to petition, the board commissioners remanded the request back to the planning commission for further review based on the applicant's request to change the site plan to include a third suite and the concerns of traffic, parking, and the outdoor play area being for children who have to cross a loading zone and not in the dress. At the time of this respo, report, staff has not received any additional information to review nor add to, uh, additions to the report. The planning commission at its October twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen meeting recommended denial by a vote of five zero due to no additional information being provided by the applicant prior to the meeting and the information provided at the meeting could not be verified. Um, here's a few pictures, I'll go through this kind of quickly, but pictures of the facility. I will say that the owner of the facility has, uh, started, uh, started a, um, an enclosure for the trash receptacle, um, uh, area, so it's not the dilapidated structure that was there before, however, it has not been completed. Um, again, if this board should recommend approval of this petition, staff recommends the following conditions. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following developments- One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. A, limit the number of total occupants per suite to a maximum of twenty-two or forty-four if both suites are utilized. B, limit the number of students to a maximum of thirty-three if both suites are used. If only one suite, the total number shall not exceed twenty-two including the staffing. C, provide a copy of the Brighton Star state license for the subject locations and development services before any business license can be issued and maintain the Brighton Star state license on the operation. D, provide a sprinkler inspection to the, to the Newton County Fire Marshal. Inspection must be approved prior to the release of the business license. E, prior to the release of the business license, provide a copy of an approved fire inspection from the Newton County Fire Marshal to development services and complete an annual fire inspection from Newton County Fire Services. F, provide a pedestrian, provide pedestrians striding along the rear of the paint area in which the children will walk across the parking lot to the play area. G, maintain compliance with section five ten, two ten of the Newton County zoning ordinance. H, a refuse area plan must be submitted, approved, and installed prior to the issuance of building permit or business license. I, prior to any construction, addition of, or removal of walls within the suite, the applicant must apply for all required building permits.
Thank you, Judy. Commissioners, if you have any questions before we open the zoning hearing. Thank you. At this time, I'll open the floor for anyone who wants to speak in favor of conditional use permit one nine, zero zero, 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 three. And first, I will ask if applicant is in attendance tonight. Anyone wanting to speak in favor, you have ten minutes. Anyone wanting to speak in favor? That portion of our hearing is closed. I will now open the floor for anyone who wants to speak in opposition to conditional use permit one nine, zero zero, 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 three. You have ten minutes to speak in opposition. Anyone want to speak in opposition? Does anyone want to speak in opposition? That portion of our hearing is closed. At this time, commissioners, I will entertain a motion to approve conditional use permit one nine, zero zero, 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 three.
Chairman, this is in District Three. So I move for denial of C P one nine dash zero zero, 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 three.
I have a motion to deny my floor. I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of denial of conditional use permit one nine, zero zero, 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 three? Raise your prosthesis, raise your prosthesis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a little question.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have one question. Our district board will move to appeal one nine, zero zero, 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 one. That's an appeal of bench one nine, zero zero, 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 seven, to be heard.
Quick, quick. This property is located at two thirty Charter's Wall. It is located in District Two and the size of the property is point five nine acres. The appeal request is to appeal to the board of, to appeal the Board of Zoning Appeals decision, which was denied at the September twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen meeting, to increase the height of a fence from four feet to six feet in the front yard of residential zoning. The original request, an applicable standard, was a variance to increase the height of the fence from four to six feet in the front yard on our same property. And the applicable standard is section two twenty-five dash zero five zero, two A of the Newton County zoning ordinance, which requires that a fence may be located in the front yard but cannot be located, cannot be at a height greater than four feet. Potential effects on the neighborhood. This property is located in the Charter's Wall subdivision. The parcel is point five nine acres in size with a lot and adjoining lots squarely aligned with the road. Although there is no extraordinary or exceptional conditions pertaining to the shape or topography, the fence ends at the property line and does not complete with a right-of-way side distance for either adjoining neighbor's view to safely pull out onto Charter's Wall. Other than the aesthetics of the fence, staff has not identified any harm to the public health, safety, or general welfare of the residents of Newton County. If I may go over this diagram right here, you'll notice that, and I apologize, I don't have a pointer, but you will notice that by our ordinance, we identify three types of yards. The rear yard is the, the area that's completely in a green rectangle. That is any portion of the yard that starts at the rear corner of the home and goes to the property line. The side yard is considered any area that is between both sides of the home, from the front side to the rear. And then our front yard will start at the furthest, furthest most point of that structure and proceed forward. So that would be your front yard. So the request before you this evening is to take a portion of just the eastern property line, that's the only side that the fence has been erected on, and to allow that fence, again, it can by right be four feet in height, and they are requesting to increase that height to six feet. Here is some pictures of plantings and also a picture of the fence from both sides. Staff did visit the property just this past week and these pictures were taken on November thirteenth. The two pictures up here would be if you're standing on the eastern property line and if you're looking from the neighbors at both two ten and two twenty Charter's Wall, that is the view that you would have. And then this is taken from the opposite side at two forty Charter's Wall. So if you were on the west side of the property and you were pulling out from your driveway, that would be the visual that you would see on that side. Conclusion. If the fence had been erected at four feet in height, there would be no additional requirements on the fence. Therefore, should the request be approved and there is no public opposition, staff would recommend approval with no conditions. However, if the neighbor at two twenty Charter's Wall, who would be most impacted by the view, appears and expresses concerns over the fence side facing their property, staff recommends, if the board approved the application, to include the following conditions. Recommended conditions. To the owner's agreement to abide by the following. One, add a facing on the neighbor's side of the fence. Fence boards shall be of the same material as the original fence. Any painting of the fence on the neighboring side shall be to preserve the integrity of the wood and shall be clear coated or painted in white. Two, add plantings on the neighbor's side with the permission of the neighbors. I'm not sure if you're able to look at this, I want to point out just a couple of things. I don't know if these pictures, but I know that there's pictures provided in your staff report. The fence was actually erected just inside the property line, so it is completely on the property at two thirty Charter's Wall. However, fences do not have what we would term a front and a back, but they do have a completed side. So the completed side actually faces the applicant's property. And staff would recommend, if the board approved this, that the side that also faces the neighbors would look like a completed fence and not the, what some people might think of as the back side, but not a unfinished fence. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question, Judy.
Yes, sir.
So... So the recommendation is if this is approved, the owner add the facing to the other side of the fence as well?
Correct, yes, sir. They would be the one most impacted. Again, if this fence had been erected at four feet in height, we would not be here discussing if there's a completed side or a non-completed side. We wouldn't be here discussing any of these requirements because you can't have privacy fencing in your front yard if it had been erected by right at four feet. Because it was erected at six feet in height, then there is the requirement and the need to apply for a variance. Since the variance was denied, there is further request to apply, to appeal that decision. One of the things that the staff report pointed out that was not captured in the, in this power quote, and I do want to make very clear, because I do think that this needs to be considered by the board. Earlier this evening in our, in the presentation of ordinance amendments, I had stated how different ordinances, it's difficult sometimes because you may have conflicting regulations. In this case, and, and my member of staff did acknowledge this, in this case, the applicant, Ms. Yaw, did call our office and did ask for regulations for the requirements of erecting a fence in her front yard. The member of staff that she was transferred to works primarily in our development regulations. So they used their regulations, they turned to that regulation, and they read the requirement that you could erect a six-foot-high fence in the front yard. We received a complaint from the neighbor and when code enforcement went out, that's when there was another more restrictive regulation in our zoning ordinance that said the fence could only be four feet in height. So I do want to point that out. You know, we discussed this with staff members so we can prevent these things from happening again. Again, there was admission that Ms. Yaw did call our office and she was giving a regulation. However, zoning laws work by the most restrictive code that applies and that is why Ms. Yaw was, was either needed to remove the fence or go through the variance procedure to see if it could be approved to be increased in height.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's not at four feet, it's at six feet, correct?
In, in portions, some of it's actually at five feet and it increases because the height of the fence in her side yard is at six feet. So not all portions of this fence is six feet in height, but the various requests to cover the entirety of that length that again is in the front yard would be to allow it to be up to six feet in height.
So basically tonight, what we are deciding is if this should remain at six feet or if it should be removed?
Again, by our ordinance, the owner of any property in this particular subdivision may erect a fence in their front yard as long as it is of certain materials which privacy fencing is allowed and as long as it's not greater than four feet in height. Now, I do not believe by right you could require her to remove it. You may be able to require it to be brought down to the height, which again would be what she could do by right, but I don't believe that the board would have the right just to order it removed.
So basically, we want to, because I'm looking at the recommended denial by the Board of Zoning Appeals, did they state why they recommended that it be denied?
I do not recall the specifics of why they recommended the denial. I do remember conversations stating that they would like it removed, but I do not remember specifically the reason that it was motion to deny.
So would it be that, like, are we making an allowance because when she called, someone told her that it could be six feet, so she erected it at six feet, so now we're making allowance? So we need to go back and say, no, instead of it being six feet, you got to cut it down and add that finishing sign?
Well, sir, I, I don't believe, again, if it was four feet in height, we could require additional conditions to the fence because there are no conditions in our ordinance at four feet in height. And staff is just here to provide you all of the evidence that led up to the variance or the request or law we're even here in front of you tonight. Staff does not have a recommendation one way or the other. We did identify that the fence is not within the right-of-way. It does not conflict with anyone's vision being able to get, enter or exit their properties. The only request before you is to let the applicant and anyone in favor or opposition present their evidence to you as to why they believe it should or should not be allowed on the block. Or, or the height we pretty should be allowed, is how I should say it.
Commissioner, show us your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Judy, the six-foot section that you are requiring or you would offer as a condition to keep the six-foot section, or this, the portion that is in the front yard?
Yes, sir.
Or that's the only portion that would be required to have the other side of the fence completed, except, correct?
Correct, because...
You wouldn't have, you wouldn't require it beyond, in the side yard or the backyard?
That, the fence in the side yard and backyard, I believe, has been existing for at least previous to this. And because it is of acceptable height, that may be something you may want to pose to the applicant as maybe a a compromise in allowing the height of the fence in the front yard. But our concern or what's before you this evening is literally just that front portion.
So, so it would just have that double-sided fence up until the point at which it meets the, the front yard, the front portion of the house?
Yes, ma'am. And to be quite honest, I'm not exactly sure what the remaining fence looks like. Again, the pictures, and we did not walk up and further up onto the property, but everything we could see is pretty much what you're going to see up there in the top left picture that shows the, the frame side of the fence.
And the landscaping is the same, landscaping requirement would be the same at, or just that portion that should be four feet?
Yes, ma'am. And I do believe that both of these properties have side yard fences as well. So I think when you get back, I believe they did, they both have where it goes from the neighboring, neighboring property line back to their home.
Any other questions, Judy? Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up, this portion of the meeting will be open to anyone wanting to speak in favor of appeal nineteen zero zero, 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 one. And I will ask if the applicant or their council president? Just say your name and address for the record, please, who you represent. Just say your name and address for the record, please, who you represent.
I'm David Osborne, attorney and president, my office is eleven oh eight Montcellus Street. I first say I, I represent Jasper County, I've been having the assuming of those comments. But I, I did come early enough, I heard Mr. Kerr in the work session a week say how easy it is blaming the county for things. And I agree with that a vast majority of the time, the plan is blaming any Congress of bad planning on the part of the developer or anything like that. But I think in this case, I'm not even sure it's disputed that this is the county's fault. The broad summary of this is that my client has done her best at every step of this process to do the right thing. She called, at least a couple of times, called the staff before ever even getting the fence company out on her property. She used a latest kinders fence, a very reputable fence company. They built, as you can see, a high-quality fence. This was not something just thrown up. She out, you know, to her, a significant amount of money for the fence. And it was, she was alerted to the fact by code enforcement that there was an issue. She was encouraged that the variance was the way to fix it, so she filed her variance. And she has really been let down every step of this process, I hope you know that. Because she, she has followed to the best of her ability, and I'm not really sure how much better she could have done to follow the ordinance and the ordinances that are in place. Ms. Johnson mentioned, there are, it's confusing and conflicted. You've got the zoning ordinances, you've got the development ordinances, even sometimes the staff, they can be confusing. And I think that it would be wrong to hold her responsible for the cost of putting face on it, modifying the fence and all, because she, she has done everything that she knew to do in this process. I think there was some confusion at the BZA meeting about exactly what, what they were deciding. It seemed as though they were, their intent was for her to have to take the fence down. And as Ms. Johnson pointed out, that's not actually a requirement for her. It's, I think it's very important in there to focus in on what we're actually talking about. We're talking about the top, mostly foot and a half of fence, just a part of the fence that's there. So we really turn this old building to now efforts at this point. We're talking about very small proceedings of fence. She has a right to have right there, and she's complying with ordinances there, it goes great. And the park is not complying type, really her fault, you know, at this point. That's what this is about. You know, what this is not about is important too, because I think the, the BZA got confused about what this is not about. This is, this is not about whether there's other fences in the front yard in the neighborhood. This is not really about presentation around the fence, that we got kind of sidetracked of in the BZA. This is not about her relationship with her neighbors, and it's not, as Ms. Johnson said, about aesthetics. There's nothing in the ordinance that's talking about the aesthetics of this fence. In fact, there is nothing in the ordinances, legally there is no front back of the fence. That's not a concept that's contained in the ordinances. So the, either side, you can look at, it's not looking like it's from the back, but in the ordinance, there is no front back. And this is, you know, it's not about blaming the fence company, that was something that came up, holding county officials responsible for this, I mean, that argument was never made in there. I think, Ms. Johnson said other than aesthetics, there were no flaws with the fence. I think that's important because the aesthetics aren't in the ordinances. None of that's in the ordinances, that's all going to be costs and votes on her, and she's trying to get it right at this point. If, she, she mentioned too, if that one part of the fence was just a foot and a half lower, maybe two feet in a couple of places, that the county would basically have no authority of the fence whatsoever. And, you know, at this point, I'm not sure I would blame her here. She went out there with just a hacksaw and cut off the top foot and a half of the fence, and didn't change anything else. Color can't be regulated, paint any kind of finish, none of that's in the ordinances. So I would just ask that you take all that into consideration, not just, I mean, go to what we're really talking about, the strict defense and the circumstances that we're, we're working on. If I work with county folder, what she's trying to do, comply, and take all of that into, in your decision.
Do you, Commissioner, you have any questions for, for this problem?
David, let me ask you a quick question. And one of the conditions they put on there was the putting the fence on the backside. Isn't that going to cause them to create a trespass on the other person's property?
It's just a, she had a surveyor go mark line to make sure she's on the, but I mean, if they did, they would have to trespass to do the work. So they would have to get neighbor's permission in order to do it. They would, and the same with any kind of screaming, would actually own the neighbor's property. And even if you put too much of the cover on the, the other side of the fence there, you're, you're getting close to the property line doing that. And the reason she had the surveyor come and lay the lines, that she knew she was on her side, but it's not very far. It's not very far on her side.
So, by putting the condition in there, or her doing additional work, that it may cause a problem?
It, it would complicate things, I think, with the, or the neighbor.
Any other questions? Just, just basically.
So, David, a question. Would it be difficult for her to meet that four-feet line or that within the ordinance so that we wouldn't have to do all the additional recommendations? Or would, would that be an issue? Would that be a problem for her to do? Would that be some complicated to do?
If, you know, I, I think, having looked at photos of the fence, I'm not going to be a fence expert. I know that there's a crossbar going across the, near the top, that's fairly close to the top. I know that they do, you know, the pattern at the top of the boards is there, and it's an attractive pattern across the top. All of that would have to be altered. What the cost would be, I can't, I can't really tell you. But I know that it's not, doing it and doing it in an attractive way is probably not something she would be capable of doing herself. She would have to pay someone for it.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Commissioner Chair. David, do you, do you know what the responses for the neighbor, from the neighbor? Have they had conversations? How does the neighbor feel about it?
It's my understanding, and that's simply from this context of the BZA meeting, that, that the neighbor would like fence on if it wasn't the code. That's, that's all my knowledge of what the neighbor would like. I'm sure...
So they have, the net, the applicant and the neighbor have not worked out a resolution?
They, they have not, and I, I'm not sure what the odds of that would be at this point. But in a perfect world, that's about my knowledge.
Any other questions, questions? Thank you. Mr. Osborne? At this time, I'll open, I will, we'll continue the votes that want to speak in favor of this, this appeal, and you have ten minutes to do so. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor? This time, we'll transition to those that are opposed to Appeal one nine zero 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 one. You have ten minutes to do so. Anyone want to speak in, speaking, opposed to this appeal? Please say your name and address for the record, please.
Sixty and Z four two twenty four wall. Just wanted to, I don't like the fence, and you put yourself in my place. How would that draw your law? If I had a chance to sell my house, how would that draw, you know, put yourself in my place? I don't like the fence, because it, you know, draw it down to the four foot like it's supposed to be. It's an obstacle, and it's been painted on, somehow, maybe she come on my side. Been painted a blue, and then in our backyard, y'all were asking how that looked. I've got a picture of that if I can pass it to you. And then, a picture of the, the blue. On the backyard one, I called the, we had county cops to come out because we had honestly thought someone had been in our backyard and, you know, did that to her fence, and we didn't want to be blamed for it. So I did find out from Officer Brooks that coming up over our fence into our yard is criminal trespass. So this all goes back to when we had our fence replaced. We replaced the existing fence that's been there probably about ten, fifteen years, and truly had it exactly the way it was. And then when she got ready to do her backyard, she called me at work and said, "Your boards are on my side." And I'm like, "Well, wait till Roger gets home and he'll go out there and look at it," because we'd already removed one board, because, you know, there had been a survey. So, I removed that board, and then she calls me, and, you know, I seen farmers getting out there and put the fence up that morning when I left. And she said that, "Then you'd be removing it." And I said, "Okay, wait till we get home, we'll be home about five, we can look at it and take off." When we got home, it was gone, and to me, that's treacherous law. You don't remove other people's property, and, you know, that's, we have a toxic. I don't want the fence there, it looks like an obstacle, and I feel that it draws my property. Thank you.
Commissioner, do you have any questions?
I think so, the, the pink paint...
It's in the backyard on our side.
And that paint from where?
The officer went over there and talked to Ms. Paul. She said that she did it, and that she was trying to decide what she was gonna paint the fence for breast, breast cancer stuff, on my side.
Any more questions, Commissioner? Anyone, anyone else want to speak opposed to this appeal? Please say your name and address for the record.
Dead Hopkins, live at two, or two ten Farnsworth Wall, when you want a house up on this. I'm gonna cut some of the things I've had, one, and say it's short because of time. We've run out of time, I'm gonna try to keep it in there. But two or three of the things, we keep the hint in there, I can read. First of all, we bought our house in two thousand sixteen. One of the reasons we bought the house in location was because of the openness, openness and view down the street from the house. Now, when I walk out in our front yard, I'm looking at the side of the bar. View has been disrupted. I'm the one in the location to see fence contract, I should have known what code was. I'm the one in Florida, okay? Now, the other thing that the owner submitted, eighteen residents signed a petition. Now, if anyone knows the person I am, I started with anybody. Only eight is a significant residents who live on top of the wall. The other ten lives in other areas of the neighborhood. Interestingly enough, we were never asked to sign a petition one way or another. So I kind of took it upon myself, kind of see what else was going on, and moved the town of the fences and residential area. On the twenty fifth of September, I took the afternoon and took a lot of subdivisions in that area. I found several newly installed fences that were terminated at the rear corner of the house, okay? There were some that were terminated at the midpoint. Most all had a height of four feet, all of them were a couple of six feet. Found only two side yard fences that were six feet high that extended only to the front corner of the house, not the reason. The fence at two thirty Farnsworth Wall is home, I found it extended to the right. And I said, "Well, I'll have some of these, if you'd like to." Listened, I won't go through now, because I'm down, I'm gonna give it to you. The next thing that happened, I'm in my kitchen about five fifteen on the, the afternoon of September twenty third. I knocked on my door, it was my neighbor's door, and he says, "You need to come look at this." Walked over there, walked out of the back porch. He was, I think, to his neighbor, passed out some pictures, I think he was watching, or some more eyes on it. The top half of the fence appeared to be had been vandalized with pink paint. My first reaction was, somebody sent somebody up. So my husband, a neighbor, called the sheriff's department. The deputy came out, he told him, showed him what was going on. He went next door, talked to next door neighbor, she admitted that she had done it. She had to do it from her side of the fence, because it's always the top of the fence that's the fence of your construction. Now, if she was trying to determine what color painted her fence, why did she do it on the neighbor's side of the fence? And since then, there's been a couple of other issues which I won't get into, that could bring up my neighbor's vote. But there's some things that went on that she has said. One of the things she talked about, the camera, that was on both of, of my neighbor, pointed to her house. That camera was there when we moved in April, moved in April fifteenth, I asked him about it. The camera was pointed toward my house, not hers. The reason that camera was there is because of the previous owners and the issues that they had in that house. If you'd like to check the record, check the unit carry, go to the force. And they had been marked in the house, but the problem there, the camera was not pointed toward her house. As far as grass sponges and all those things she made playing about, they mow the yard every day, just do it like I do. He has a awesome blade, and awesome container on his board, just like I do. I have never seen any of this sponges in my life. So some of the things she's pointing out here, it, it kind of not been, in this is my opinion. It lost out progress. I wouldn't have any real objection if the fence before it had. Per code, and that's what, when you look around at the neighborhoods, that's what you find. I mean, that even goes with the defense and your subdivisions. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Could you give your name and address for the record one more time, please?
Sure. Dead Hopkins, H O P K I N S, two ten Farnsworth.
Commissioner, do you have any further questions, Mr. Osborne?
Oh, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I have to ask again, is anyone else who wants to speak in opposition? We have ten minutes. Anyone else who wants to speak in opposition? Uh, Mr. Osburn, you have, you don't have four minutes to speak again through the microphone.
I would just say, um, that a lot of the light that we just heard has no relevance in this whatsoever. That, you know, anything on the fence in the back, which they failed, I think, to make clear that that's my client's fence on her own property. Uh, that it's, it's cheated trespass. There was no charges or anything like that. That they're trying to sensationalize something that's really just a pretty straightforward issue when it comes to the actual ones. Uh, themselves and what requirements are and what she did cleaning up this. That everything else is really, it's a really kind of distraction. I don't think anybody actually contested, uh, the, the points that I made. Uh, the first time I was up here, I think it was all just, uh, basically like a domestic fight. Issue going on which, uh, I don't think should have any relevance to your consideration of the, the actual issue that was being raised here. Um, have to answer any other questions?
Misses Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Osburn, do you have any idea what the cost of that portion of the fence that should be four feet? Do you have any, uh, idea what the cost of that fence was?
Uh, I, I don't, uh...
You don't have any idea what the cost to install or put fence to be?
To, you mean, remedy what's there now?
Yes.
Like, no, no variance? Um, I don't, I don't know exactly what that cost would be.
Um, Ms. Johnson, do you have any idea what the cost would be to remedy that portion of the fence?
Uh, no ma'am, I do not, but I would wonder maybe the actual, uh, property under maybe of what she paid for the six foot fence and that might be a benchmark.
Could you add one?
That would be, we have to.
Just, just for the portion that's, um, in the, the area of condition?
Maybe because that was not the only thing, or she paid.
But you, you would know what this worth, uh, cost by square foot?
It's total sixty five.
And hold on, say, say your name and address for record.
Down, oh, two thirty, five four. The fence is sixty five square feet total, approximately twenty five or thirty feet is what's in discrepancy from four feet to six feet. The entire fence from, you know, from the end, sixty five feet is seventeen fifty. For that portion that I'm looking, I have to take down and also be looking at some structural instability of it because it was built at six nine four. So it's eight hundred and sixty five dollars. But I am not hiring anybody. I have spent so much money, I have done everything I needed to do. I will be taking that fence down. If I have to take it down or put the half two feet, I'll measure each individual board and make sure I'm in compliance of four feet. And that will go down. You also have to understand those boards are already pressure treated and sealed. These boards, if I have to cut them down or not be sealed. So that way it's also going to deteriorate. My previous fence, hundred fence put in for me last six point five years. So this is going to basically damage the fence. But, you know, whatever y'all decide, I'll be in compliance, but I will not hire somebody to come and take it down. I will do the one alternative that I have to.
Misses, any more questions? There's one.
Oh, Miss Chair. Excuse me. So if you alter, I know you're talking about the ceiling. Do we know what expense would be to reseal that portion that you altered?
I will do it myself, or it would be, I mean, it's not going to be sealed like the wood is sealed. It would just basically, I'm gonna have to paint it. I'll put a silver on it and paint it. But it will not be, as you see, that straight and even. Just so y'all understand, between those boards would be right at four feet. So we're not looking in, in like you said, the, well, if the land, some of it is maybe a foot and a half. Um, or a little bit more, but it's not right at six feet where the discrepancy is from the actual front of my house to where the fences. So we're talking two thousand.
So are you planning on painting it a color? Cause I noticed in one of the photos, some of it's being painted blue. Are you planning on keeping it the color of the wood?
No, the portion is only dependent on the match now. Now, on that side, you know, there's no code for the paint. And of course, on that side is, and, you know, right there where that marker is, is where the property line meets. And that's it right there. So I've not been on their property. Everything was done from a high ladder with an extension sprayer on that blue section. And even if I went on that side, my feet can stay on my property if I wanted to go on that side. So they need to understand, as long as I'm on my property, I'm in compliance and I'm not trespassing.
Was, was there a specific reason why you wanted to add this particular fencing? If there is no other fencing like that in the neighborhood?
Basically, I did not take that consideration. I've been in that house for twenty five years. I had originally, I used to keep their dogs. When I stopped keeping their dogs, all crap was loose. And one thing after another. I planted those blue junipers that are two and a half years old. All my other shrubberies around the tree is twenty years old, everything else is twenty five years old. So I had the shrubs there. I was on my phone one day, as the neighbor was cutting his grass, he did not have the mulcher cover over his tractor. I was standing under my tree and all my grass had started dying and I didn't know why. And I always had stuff on my cart, you know, from grass cookies and crap and dust. He was blowing it over and it went on me. And I stood there and was on the phone and I, you know, I said, "I'm done." So I called Conner Spence and I did go back and forth because I didn't want to do it, but I had done everything I could do to try to stop what was going on. So this was the only solution. When I put it up, it was like a burden had been lifted. My car stayed clean, my grass grew back, I had no issues. So that's what prompted it. And, and no, I didn't talk to them, I don't have any conversations with them because avoid conflict. You know, I just don't want to be bothered or let alone. And, and just for the record, that fence in the back is my fence. When the police were called on me, they were told that vandalism, had somebody vandalized their fence. So that's, and, and the paint is marked for a reason. It had nothing to do with what color it's going to be painted. Those sections are going to come down. I am taking down my back fence and portions.
So you painted paint because you're not taking it down?
My side has paint, my side has paint also on the side, but not straight line. But I can see it, those portions are marked on my side. And that has nothing to do with this case.
I think, practically seeing, I think my conditions are really, really effective. Because I think if my client doesn't get the variance, she's gonna do it herself, try and take it down to four feet. If it's four feet, it's in compliance code. And, you know, at this point, it's an attractive fence. I think if she does that herself, it can't really have guaranteed quality or attractiveness or anything like that. So I think the meaning is, despite the objections, it's gonna end up being a frustrating, a high solution.
Thank you. This question is from Ms. Johnson. Um, in our code, uh, is there anything in the, in the code for fencing that speaks to the quality of the fencing? Or is it just the height of fencing? Are there any materials, any aesthetics that are spoken to in the code?
Uh, there are some. You're not allowed to have a chain link fence in the front yard. It does have to either be some type of proxy fencing or some type of, uh, either photoball iron or ball iron. Um, the fence does have to be structurally sound. Um, but that is just from a, uh, a structural point of view. Again, it's not from aesthetics. So the boards would at some point have to be, uh, sealed. So if the wood brought it and the fence was rickety, then it would be required to be taken down.
So, um, and there's no point at which there's an inspector that approves the fence?
Actually, we do not permit fencing. Uh, most of the time, people do not call us even to inquire if there are regulations or restrictions. Um, there is no permit because it's not considered, um, like a structure. I mean, it has to be structurally sound and use of words interchangeably. But fence is not considered like a permanent structure. So there's no permit at this point, um, required. Uh, I do see opportunity for some ordinance amendments in the future regarding fencing, but at this time, I don't want to add this hospital.
So if someone were to, um, uh, call for a code enforcement violation, there's nothing except the height of the fence that you could authorize?
Yes, ma'am.
What board?
Yes, ma'am.
So you could cite the materials and the height?
Yes, ma'am. And if it was, again, structurally sound, if it was, um, if the materials were, um, dilapidated in such a way that it would not be structurally sound. I, I, I know I keep saying that, but I don't know how to further explain it. I know what I see in my head and I know what the code would be, but it's just about being structurally sound.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, Misses? Thank you. All right, Misses, it's time. I want to entertain a motion to approve appeal case one nine zero 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 one.
Um, is, is there a way for us? And I, I don't know if this is the right time to ask or not. Um, because I see the, uh, recommended conditions. Is there a way that we can make sure that this meets that four feet? If we approve it, should, is, is that supposed to be added into the conditions or do we just have to? All right, there will be a motion for approval, which they have recommendations, correct?
And any other recommendations that have been brought forward by Ms. Johnson? Do we articulate those?
However, if your motion is to require it to four feet, then the, then the, the conditions are, are void because it meets code. So you would actually just be recommending to deny the petition. And then the law would be back in the owner's court as to if they choose to appeal this to court or if they choose to come into compliance with the code.
Uh, okay. Father, reset please. Father, reset please. Alright, there's only portion, there's only portion of our meeting is uh, we're back in. There's only portion of our meeting. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve appeal one nine zero 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 one.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny um, A P P one nine dash zero 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 one.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Mason and a second by Commissioner Schultz to deny appeal one nine zero 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 one. Any discussion? All in favor? Four, zero, and one, and four in favor of denial and one extension. But ask why, Mr. Commissioner?
Uh, thank you, sir. I, I just, I'm gonna leave it on this one.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you a question. Based on our denial, that means that the fence would have to comply with the full total requirement, correct?
Judy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we will hear case number, rezoning case number R Z one nine zero 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 eight.
Um, the rezoning petition before this evening is located at seven twenty six Benton Dairy Road. Uh, the property uh, currently is twenty seven point three three acres. It actually has a dual zoning on the property. A portion of the property is zoned A R agricultural residential, which is uh, shown up here in the white green. And the other portion of the property is zoned A agricultural. Uh, the applicant's request is to change the zoning from A agricultural and A R agricultural to A R, all the property to A R agricultural residential to allow for the applicant to subdivide the property into two parcels. Um, originally, the, uh, there's been a, a slight requen- uh, request to change the conditions. Staff is in support of this. Um, the request is the two parcel size, sizes would be, one parcel would be four point four acres. And then the remaining uh, acreage would be twenty two point nine three acres. Uh, the four point four acres restrict for them to be able to erect their personal home. Uh, this was heard by the planning commission on October twenty second, two thousand and nineteen. And they did recommend approval with staff's conditions. So, should the board approve this petition tonight, staff does. Uh, the conclusion is, given the fact that the property is duly zoned A R and in close proximity to other existing uh, A R zonings along with the applicant's proposed use of the land, staff is of the opinion that the rezoning may be appropriate for the site. And if the petition is approved by the board of commissioners, it should be approved A R agricultural residential. Conditions subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions complete with stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the board of commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following. A, a monoply of the newly created parcels must be reported and provided to development services. B, and this condition has been amended uh, due to the applicant letting me know that in order for them to create a parcel for their home, uh, to be erected on, if they do a flat portion, it's going to eat up a lot of unusable land in that flat portion. So, they've been able to get the parcel size they would like to erect their home on to four point four acres. So, condition B would bring the two newly created parcels of twenty two point nine three acres and four point four acres, um, and any other uh, subdivision of the parcel shall not be less than five acres minimum. And C, any required permits must be obtained from the Department of Development Services before any construction of development on the property. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to go over that again. Uh, I, it's just again, because their goal is to be able to erect their personal home on one of these lots and they have already um, had a monoply run up. And that flat would indicate a four point four acre parcel, which would link the other parcel twenty two point nine three acres. And any additional subdivision of the property would require at least a five acre parcel. And if I may remind you as well, A R allows for as small as a two acre parcel that the cause, the applicant uh, has indicated that this is their personal land and they don't have any um, any... Yeah, I'm sorry. It, it's, it's been a evening, but they have no desire, that's a good word, no desire to further subdivide the property. So, again, we're just trying to accommodate what would be reasonable for their home if the board would approve the rezoning.
Commissioner, you have any questions for Judy? Thank you, Judy. This time, we'll move into the uh, let anyone who wants to speak in favor of rezoning request one nine zero 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 eight. You have a total of ten minutes to do so. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Patricia Morel. The address is seventy two six Benton Dairy Road. And basically, we are just handing a portion off um, the least amount we can to give to the bank for collateral. Because aren't the main reason for them doing, or asking you guys to approve the rezoning?
Thank you. Any, any questions for Ms. Morel? Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of this rezoning request? Anyone else, want to speak in favor? That portion of the hearing is closed. We'll now open it up for those who want to oppose rezoning request one nine zero 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 eight. You have ten minutes to do so. Anyone want to speak in opposition? Anyone want to speak in opposition? That portion of our meeting is closed. Commissioners, I will entertain a motion to approve rezoning, rezoning request R Z, R E Z one nine zero 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 eight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motions approved. R E Z one nine zero 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 eight. Uh, address seventy two six Benton Dairy Road to change the zoning from agricultural and agricultural residential to agricultural residential to allow the ac- ac- to subdivide the property into two parcels.
I'll say without motion. Did I have conditions on this? Okay, subject to the staff conditions, yes. We have a motion and I'll answer. Any more discussion? All in favor? All vote? Our final case passes. Our last case, case number, conditions, conditional use permit. C U P one nine zero 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 six.
Um, the final petition for you this evening is a conditional use permit request located at two eighty eight County Line Road in District One. This is a request to operate a home occupation with customer contact, which would be a Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu training facility from an accessory structure on the property. The subject site and surrounding area, the subject site is a total of twenty six point three two acres and is zoned A R agricultural residential and located on the north side of County Line Road. The primary residence on the side is approximately twenty four hundred square feet. The applicant has constructed a twenty four hundred square foot building. All of the adjacent properties are zoned A R agricultural residential. Uh, the planning commission did recommend on October twenty second uh, approval unanimously with staff's recommended conditions. Uh, just to give you a little background on home occupations, um, our ordinance allows for home occupations to be um, um, facilitated from any residential property in unincorporated uh, area of Eaton County. However, there are, are certain uh, restrictions or requirements. If you want to operate a business in an accessory structure and/or if you want to have customer contact on the property, it requires the petition to come before a public hearing in order to address concerns that may come up from conducting the business outside of the residence itself or having customer contact on the property. This would be one of the businesses, should the board approve the petition, that would be allowed to operate uh, on the property. It's not one of the restricted ones such as auto repair. It's not a business that could be operated from a residential facility. But like a net studio or a training facility or um, things such as like maybe having a um, uh, some type of uh, business where you have one-on-one customer contact. Those are the types of businesses that can petition for a conditional use. Um, this picture right here kind of shows the location of where the primary residence is. There's also a barn on the property. Again, this is A R agricultural residential property, which allows for larger structures than you would be able to have an R one, R two, or R three zoning. So, there's no restriction to the size of the structure. Uh, the structure is existing. Uh, the applicant has the right to have the structure there. However, in order to facilitate operating the business out of it, it wouldn't have to receive a, a free conditional use permit. So, um, if this petition is approved by the board of commissioners, it should be approved for a conditional use permit to operate a home occupation with customer contact and be located in an accessory structure conditional to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions complete with stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the board of commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the accessory structure as follows. A, all training shall last no later than nine P M on any night of the week. Two, any and/or all required approvals and build permits shall be submitted and approved by the Eaton County Development Services Department prior to the issuance of the business license. Three, prior to the issuance of the business license, accessory structure must be inspected and approved by the Eaton County Fire Marshal. Four, the approval is limited to two years in which it shall be brought back to the planning commission to check for impact, impact and compliance to the continuance of the use. And that is another requirement of our zoning ordinance. Uh, for any uh, home occupation that receives a conditional use permit, we have the right to bring it back in front of the planning commission within two years just to make sure that again, it's operating within the bounds of and not making an impact on its neighbor.
Thank you, Judy. Commissioners, if you have any questions? This time, this time I'll open this hearing up for those, all those who want to speak in favor of conditional use permit one nine zero 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 six. You have ten minutes to do so. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Joshua Woodport. Address is two eighty eight County Line Road. Um, I have very little to add to the lovely presentation. Uh, real quickly, just, this is usually the question I get asked in the field. Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu is a non-striking martial art. It's a combination of judo and wrestling. Uh, it's about control and, and so it's not a whole bunch of each other. Uh, that's the first question I almost always get. So, I have nothing else to add about answering for the questions.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions?
You took my question.
Uh, no. Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak in favor of this conditional use permit? Anyone else want to speak in favor? Alright, anyone want to speak opposed? You have two minutes. Anyone want to speak in opposition to conditional use permit one nine zero 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 six? Anyone want to speak in opposition? That portion of our meeting is closed. Commissioners, I now seek a motion to approve conditional use permit one nine dash zero 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 six. That is my district. I move to approve subject to stated staff recommendations. A motion by me and the second by Commissioner Schultz. Any more discussion? All in favor? All vote? Fast as five zero. This time, we'll go move back to, we'll move back to item nine on our agenda. And I believe, fire services seeking approval of the agreement for Eaton County Fire Solutions for mandatory training for EMS and fire. Ms. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this agreement is to provide training services, uh, as well as software testing services for fire uh, service personnel. They are required to have some of the hours of continuing education on an annual basis. And this allows them to be able to do the training on and allows product flexibility. You don't have to set up individual classes. Uh, it allows them to be able to train from their work. Chief Connor is here tonight. If you have any further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Anyone have any questions for Chief Connor? Or Mr. Kirk? Commissioner Schultz?
Uh, so, Mr. Kirk, on, um, the, uh, page that is the choice replacement of agenda item, it says this is, um, this, the cost was a thousand seven thousand dollars. Um, but it doesn't say whether it's funded or not.
It is funded.
So, it is, it is in our budget.
Yes, ma'am, the dollar, the money is there for the training. Any more questions for Mr. Kirk or Chief Connor? In that case, I'll seek a motion to approve the agreement for new county and target solutions for mandatory training for EMS and fire.
So, good.
Sir?
I have a motion and a second, a motion by Commissioner Schultz and a second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Five zero. Item number ten, fire services discussion, consideration of settlement agreement relating to F L S A claims. Mr. Kirk? Thank you, Mr. Kirk.
Uh, but thank you, uh, Mr. Kirk. Uh, but before you all tie that, you have a settlement, a settlement agreement relating to Fair Labor Standards Act claims that were made by Bobby Cagle, Brian Massey, and Trace Stewart regarding misclassification of their positions as battalion chiefs. We have reached a settlement of that matter. Mister Bobby Cagle will be receiving three thousand five hundred dollars. Mister Brian Massey will be receiving three thousand five hundred dollars. Trace Stewart will be receiving three thousand five hundred dollars. And the attorney for the gentleman referenced above will be receiving nine thousand dollars. Um, that totals twenty thousand dollars and eighteen cents. Um, so, board members, I would seek the approval of the settlement agreement because it is a Fair Labor Standards Act claim. We will have to submit this to the court for approval. So it's not one that we cut a check on the next roll. I would submit along with, um, the gentleman's attorney to the court that I would let you all know once it's approved.
Commissioners, I seek, uh, a motion to accept the settlement agreement. As stated by the county attorney. I make a motion to accept the settlement agreement. Well, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. A motion by Commissioner Cowan and a second by Commissioner Schultz. Any more discussion? Commissioner Schultz?
Uh, um, could you give us both names?
Certainly, sure. Bobby Cagle, and that was a settlement amount of three thousand five hundred. Brian Massey, that's a settlement amount of three thousand five hundred. And Trace Stewart were a settlement amount of three thousand five hundred. The attorney's name is Mitchell Benjamin, and the fees there were nine thousand dollars.
More discussion, Commissioner Cowan?
Just one comment to, to clear up something that the public didn't know, but in the fire services, it's complicated when you have battalion chiefs that are considered, um, not subject to overtime versus the nature of their job when they're out there putting out the fires, which they wouldn't subject to overtime. Um, it's very easy for cities and counties to get into a, an issue with this. I'm just glad that it was called ahead of time and did not get involved by the department. So, I think they did a good job on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Cowan. Any more, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Uh, the question I guess I have is, do, do you see anything to do with what I have?
Yes, sir. It's my understanding that all three individuals are still in, in, with the fire services. Do you want to come?
Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion taken. Item number eleven, well, the works requesting approval to submit the attached resurfacing project list to G, G O P for twenty twenty L eight funding. Commissioner, uh, Kirk?
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. What you have before you is the proposal for road for resurfacing utilizing one point four million dollars that we will be granting. One point four, one point four, excuse me, one million four hundred thirty-one thousand dollars that we will receive in grants from G O P. Uh, there's thirty percent off for a hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars, which will be paid for out of two thousand eleven, uh, S W A S revenues. Um, and we are asking that you approve this, um, road list. Also, um, this is only a portion of the page in the resurfacing that we will do. The remainder of that will come out of S W A S persons. Uh, Mr. Clay is here tonight. If you have a question regarding the road selection process.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. He will be coming. If you want to add just, that pretty much, uh, we need to say every year. And, um, we, uh, we're planning to do all this work with our counties. And, um, like I've always said, we have some, uh, some other funds, uh, S W A S and some, um, so we can use and use to do some other roads as well. A lot of arrangements are more approved. Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kirk. Uh, the question I had, is this the, uh, um, the list, the list of the roads that I, that I was, that I wanted to add, um, Laster Street is one of the topics that I may be a little over there, so I just kind of need you to help me get it and remind us on it.
Um, the, I know that Laster Street is in the city and that's something we're working with the city to see about it. Something down with that, but that would be separate from this.
Yeah, yeah, sir. Yes, sir. The reason why, uh, Lord, like Chester, Lord suggested because when you read the list out, there was, uh, I think there were no roads in District Four that was being serviced by, I know, I think that my neighbor Holden directed, we talked about it a while back. And it was, it was two roads through. We wanted to look at, was Laster Street and then off of City Park, I think it was O T Lane, because Mr. Pitts, not that Mr. Pitts, but that Mr. Pitts, a car at home, so it was a road that would, uh, be repaired. And you want to make sure.
Well, um, maybe some of it is.
Yes, so that would make sure, and I, I want to provide and check with him and make sure the road we looked at.
So the, the, um, like it's a time zone for subdivision, or subdivision.
And I, and also why I say that is when they come with Mr. Chester, I'm telling you, when, when the, I had Mr. Chester, it wasn't a best to see, you know, who made it, and he's really, really good man. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, Commissioners? Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Cowan?
Um, I know my road is not on there. I don't want to ask her about Bend Derrick Road, but oh, please. It's up there. I still get a lot of complaints on that, so. What have you all heard of that?
Um, we are trying to tackle those, um, uh, gravel roads that we have, still dirt roads that we have, and we are trying to get all of those scheduled. Um, the one reason why it's not on this list is because this money, this grant, is solely for resurfacing, just the paper, as I've been hearing. Um, part of one of the other roads, um, that we worked that too is, um, uh, Newton Factory Show, Factory Bridge Road, as well as, um, Davis Ford, the section of Davis Ford, and the other one you mentioned, Gregory. Um, those are all roads that we would like to do a triple surface treatment. Um, and, uh, uh, kind of handle those that, so. That's a different part.
Just do whatever you can, because I, I promise to the people they call that I'm mentioning publicly. You don't know that.
I promise those same people I would be doing. They, they get their own.
They get you, okay.
Uh, Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, I know that we have like some, so I would like to know give me a timeline so that I can let the, the individuals and all that know what's going on with the end. And then long, um, I brought this up a few months ago and, um, it's not on here. Um, we probably, I know the residents.
And then we, you, the crew got it and, and, uh, fixed the one street.
Well, I think you fixed, I think you did some patching. Um, but we just need to make sure that they, uh, that that's satisfactory to them. Because it was, it was pretty, it was pretty substantial on that one street.
Yeah, I think, I think we've, well, um, it should hold, you know, a few years on that one street, but we, um, I'll talk to Chris and see what.
Yeah, and I, I'm a drum bobbing, again, this way, to start crossing. This white crossing on there, it's easy to probably look at, but it was but if you give me the timeline, I'd like to definitely appreciate that.
Any more questions, comments for Mr. Kirk? Thank you. Commissioners? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the submitted resurfacing projects. Uh, the resurfacing project list, the G O P for twenty twenty L eight funding.
Second.
Uh, I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Schultz. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Chair is five zero. All right, item number twelve, Recreation Department, discussion consideration of Amendment One to Construct, Construction Management Design Build Contract for Turner Lake Facility Expansion and Innovation. Mr. Kirk?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, this is partly for recreation and the other part of this is the senior services, uh, similar expansion. Um, Recreation Department is going to do an expansion on their, um, be, of their B C Core cardio room and to add on a small section, um, next to the gym. But it's being included, was included in the contract for the senior services expansion. But each, both of the, these projects are coming out of different buckets of money. Uh, but we put them under one contract. And what this is, this First Amendment is to, uh, is for the maximum guaranteed price for the project. Um, Mr. Price is here tonight, who is our project manager. Um, and I'm sure he can speak to some of the particulars, um, about the project. But we have been working on it steadily on the design, and so now, uh, that design information has been finalized. And so we're at a point now where we've, uh, we've initiated this, and you'll see the other project along very shortly for the same thing, so we'll put that on.
Yes, sir. Uh, since, uh, already some of we've been working on our design build team of Sunbelt, uh, builders and working with departments, Parks and Rec, uh, with the street and group team to do several things. One is looking at the expansion, uh, to grow, uh, senior services about almost five thousand square feet and to renovate another almost five thousand square feet existing space. To give her an independent facility that we, give her the ability to build her own facilities and grow a, a new kitchen, a prepared and serving. Um, while we were there, uh, Parks and Rec saw a need to expand, as, as the floor said, uh, their exercise facilities. So we were sort of working with the same group. Um, so what you see tonight is a guaranteed maximum price. It was just an amendment in the first contract, the base contract, to do a guaranteed maximum price. Uh, if you break that number down, it's about one point four of that is to give senior services. A hundred forty-nine thousand of that is for the expansion of Parks and Rec. And then about twenty-six thousand dollars in there of, um, general funds that would be, go back and they work the jobs today. Uh, all this will be done under one contract. Um, it's scheduled to be completed by October of twenty twenty.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Seem, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the question I have is this with the Lord. You had said, uh, just earlier that there was some, uh, pockets of money in New, New York that some came, uh, for the senior service from to the S W A S two thousand seventeen. And what about the, uh, B C Core move, the expansion, like, where did money come from?
Uh, the Recreation Department is using S W A S funds, um, as well for their portion. Um, there was a certain, I'm sorry, I don't have the number right with me right now, but there was money that was budgeted in the two thousand seventeen S W A S, um, for the Recreation Department. And this was one of the projects, um, that they chose to spend their money.
And I said already, I said this, uh, from District Four approved, the, uh, the, um, the center of the building is in District Four. And District Four, for, we, uh, gave us, it was sold fifty thousand dollars, and I want to make sure that that might have substantially moved exactly what somehow money would go to, or whatever, the, uh, the renovation, uh, what are they, from the B C Core room. And I said already, I said this, this B C Core at the lifetime, which was, I want to call him a pioneer. And he did a whole lot of stuff that, that, uh, if you just think in recognition for, uh, for recreation, he was a great, great leader. And, uh, I'm just proud to, um, know him, to know him in life, man.
Any other questions, comments, questions? Thank you. This time I seek a motion. Uh, let's see, a motion to approve the contract. Amendment of the contract. Let me read that again. We have a discussion consideration Amendment One, Construction Management Design Build Contract for Turner Lake Facility Expansion and Innovation. So we're voting on amendment to the contract. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? Commissioner Cowan?
Um, I think you're okay with all the changes on that.
Yes, sir. I agree.
Yes, it will fine. And also, I'm sorry to bring this to your attention, but the, um, you did have separate handout that had the, the dollar amount still went and all the correction, so this is a clean copy. What was in your packet was what the provisions that were recommended to, uh, the contract language in the, in the amendments. Uh, but you do have the total on there.
And I will, I believe this has been one of the easiest winters that we've ever worked with a contract, and we're very, very open to changes.
Any more discussion, Mr. Commissioner Schultz?
Mr. Kirk? Our ten. So, um, when I read this, um, this document, this completed document, it doesn't have, it just has the maximum guarantee, the guaranteed maximum price and the overall increase. It doesn't have it broken down in terms of how much is going to RAC and how much is going to senior services, so potentially some of that could even change. Is that possible?
Um, if, definitely. It's not broken down in this document, but in the bill, uh, it will charge it to the department, to the, to the, to the correct. So, so there, so there are attachments that go along with this amendment. Uh, scheduled values that will break down for each of the three projects, um, because they're coming out of different funding sources.
So, does it reference that in the, uh, that there are?
In your package for all of that.
All I have is this, right?
Can you give the attachments to it?
Harman?
There's twenty-four.
Would you mind if you read anything out, as how you did earlier, one, I think it's?
Right, so it's, and there's a change here, but it's, uh, it's senior services, it's one day four hundred and two thousand. There's a change. For the Parks and Rec, it's one hundred forty-nine thousand, there's a change, and twenty-six thousand, depending for the, um, the capital.
So all I have is this document, there's attachments to it. I, we don't have the attachments. Can you get the attachments?
Yes, I can, I can get, I, I, my apologies, I thought I would get the quick.
No, all we have is this document. No, all we have is this document, and our package that was not completed, and then this is the completed document without the attachments. But I think it would be helpful to have the attachments. I'll be back if you say it, but only if it's, okay. I mean, I, I don't like that, or give it such an O B N, it just, we just need the whole attachments.
I'll be right back.
Any more discussion or questions? All in favor? All opposed? Press is five zero. All right. We are at, uh, Agenda Item Eighteen, Alcohol License First Read. Item thirteen, discussion and consideration of one meeting, one DOC meeting in December as opposed to two. Uh, open the floor for discussion amongst the commissioners. Yes, we got preference.
See, what I'm saying is, um, it's my pleasure, we typically have one meeting.
So, um, you know, I'm prepared to be here for both meetings, um, if, uh, if the board would have one, I can go along with that, but I'm prepared to be here for two.
Uh, I'm, I'm with Commissioner Schultz on that. I could do two. If, 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 if necessarily have two, I could be here. Uh, one is fine, I'd like to be here too. Commissioner Mason.
Um, yes, one. Actually, that's good.
Okay, so I'm seeking a motion that we have only one meeting in the month of December, and that meeting being on what day? December third.
Someone would say about, sir, seven.
I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion taken as five zero. Now, we move to Agenda Item Eighteen, Alcohol License First Read. Corner Grocery, thirteen thirteen Highway eleven North, Social Circle, Georgia, all eight and G. At this, at this time, we move to Agenda Item Nineteen, Citizen Comments. Citizens have three minutes. Please keep comments respectful and directed to the entire board. So this is comments, you have three minutes. Commissioner Cowan, Commissioner comments, I will start with you.
Yours, Marcelo. Um, the only thing I've got to mention is that we were scheduled to jam down, clean up for Saturday, but I got called from Lloyd and Riley, and we're expecting about nine percent chance of running. So that's going to postpone, uh, we will not have any other time to do it this year, so, you know, spring and, uh, I'll probably, so. So, and if any of y'all were planning on coming to, uh, to pick up trash, then get away from the spray. So, um, but that's the only thing I have.
Hey, Commissioner Cowan, Commissioner Henderson.
Well, uh, well, Mr. Seem, Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that, that the tree account, it cost a whole lot, especially without part of the, uh, the tree. And the council won't, um, go there and see, uh, together.
Thank you. Commissioner Schultz.
I'll take the one, thank you. So I just want to thank the board for approving under the consent agenda, the resolution for the peer learning experience. Just to give you a little bit of background on that, the, uh, about a year ago, we approved the stepping up initiative, which looks at mental health in our jail system and, or mental health altogether in the county, and specifically, but there is a task force that the sheriff put together to, to, um, meet the needs of a, um, of a grant that we were awarded to look at, uh, mental health or mental illness in our jail population. We've now, uh, collected data that shows that about seventeen percent of our inmates actually have a mental illness. And so this particular resolution will now allow us to, um, uh, submit a new application for a new grant that's funded by the, um, John and Catherine T, or other foundation, and that will allow, um, a rep, a commissioner and a member of the Sheriff's Department to begin, uh, peer learning experiences with other counties throughout the country. If we are selected for this, um, uh, grant, we would be one of ten counties in the entire country that would be looking at how we can address mental illness in our courts, uh, in our jail. So it's a, it's a really exciting opportunity for us to address this issue. This particular portion of the grant will look at racially, racial disparities. So I think that that's something that we all know that exists, but now we'll be able to look at it from a data perspective, so thank you very much for that. And my last comment is I wish all of you a wonderful Thanksgiving. I know that we all have a lot to be grateful for, and, um, so happy Thanksgiving upcoming.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I don't even have much to say. I think one of the most exciting things that I put out there is that I'm expecting a new little baby boy, my wife and I, I guess I should say. So we're excited about that. Um, he is good to be here May twelve, so, um, twenty twenty. Yeah, well, in that area, yes. So we are excited about, um, our new little baby boy. Um, once again, I, uh, appeal to our, I'm sorry, I used the same consumers, our citizens. Um, the census is definitely here. We are now, uh, towards the end of December, working out of our education phase, uh, about the census. Uh, starting January one, we will enter into the marketing phase of the census, basically getting the word out, um, letting our citizens know that the census is on its way, how important it is for us to fill out our census. Uh, this is going to be the very first time that it will be online, so it will be very easy and accessible for those that prefer to do it online versus having to fill it out and mail it in, and you can still do it the other way. But now we have options, and so I think it's going to be great, and hopefully that will help more people fill it out. Um, and so just if we, we, our objective is to get above eighty percent. I know I'm a pastor, I think we've been around seventy five, seventy six percent. And so we want to get above eighty percent, and what this will do is will really help bring in those federal dollars that we can utilize to bring services, bring, you know, infrastructure, bring things to our county, uh, that we can utilize as our county is really growing very, very rapidly. For every person that is not counted, every citizen not counted, we lose, it went between fourteen hundred to twenty three hundred dollars per person. And so that's a lot of money, and so if we can, uh, basically capitalize on as much of those funds as we possibly can, um, I know I would love to begin to find different ways how we can generate revenue for our county. I think this is one of the immediate ways how we can make that happen in twenty twenty, uh, so that we can really start advancing and taking our county to the next level. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I'll try to be brief. Uh, the first one, uh, I, I, I now work in the insurance business. I've tried to make some, yeah, I work in the insurance business, and um, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put our chief on, on the spot here. Chief, we, we've got to find a contingency plan, some type of mandate in the old Station Four area. We've, we've got, I've been talking to people every single day, uh, not only as a commissioner, but as a, as an insurance person, where, uh, since the volunteer station has closed, there, no longer can no longer afford to live where they are because of the insurance policies. And we, we've got, we, and I'll, I'll be happy to get with you and, and, or whoever, we, we get together convene, but we've, we've got to find a solution, we got to find a solution fast, uh, to, to mandate this particular issue. I'm here, so I'm, I'm, I'm seeing some calculations of insurance policies in, in the profession, so we got that going on. Uh, on a later note, uh, it is Thanksgiving next week. We've all, Mr. Schultz mentioned, we've all got a lot to be thankful for, I know I do. Um, so, uh, I, I, well, I'm gonna do Thanksgiving morning, and it doesn't have to be Thanksgiving morning. I, I'm a member of an organization that's gonna, gonna feed some kids Thanksgiving, or take meals to kids Thanksgiving morning. I would encourage everyone in our community to partner with an organization. I know the Ministers Union is doing something new, uh, Thanksgiving Day, right? I believe. Uh, they would gladly, it's, my son and I volunteered there a couple of years ago, we made it in, uh, Thanksgiving Eve this year. They'll gladly take your help, they'll gladly take your donations. Uh, we have food banks, Two Twelve Harvest Baptist Church has a huge food bank, we have food banks here in heaven, several different churches. I would encourage everyone as part of this Thanksgiving season to participate in one, just one, one event, or provide one meal. There are a lot of kids in our county, and school is not in, do not get square meals. If you don't believe that, you, you go talk to school system. I watched a picture, she says the first thing. A lot of kids in our county do not have meals during the summer or during Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays because they're not at school, they get two squares when they're at school. Think about that, consider volunteering somewhere. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, a second by Commissioner Schultz. All in favor? We stand adjourned.